Good morning, good morning everyone. If you please take your seats. It is Friday, June 2nd. I want to welcome you to the Valley at our Valley City Hall. It's a pleasure to be here. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonin, Buscaino, Sidio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weesar, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson, ten members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes?
Harris Dawson moves and Bloomingfield seconds. Next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Bonin moves and Mr. O'Farrell seconds. Continue.
Mr. President, there are requests to receive and file 1C in as much as the lien was paid in full and continue A, 1A, B, D through K to August 16, 2017 per department request, sir.
Okay, so without objection, so ordered. Continue.
Items 1 and 2 are items noted for a public hearing and there are cards on 2, sir.
Continue. Oh wait, let's vote on 1. Let's open on item 1, let's open the...
Mr. President, item 1, the only item that was opened was 1C and that was done previously as a unanimous vote, sir.
Okay, well then let's move on.
Items 3 and 4 are items for which public hearings have been held. Please note that item 4 is a planning and land use management committee report that has been posted and circulated for council consideration. However, it should be held, item 4 should be held for an amending motion, sir.
Well, let's hold for move on 3. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you Luigi. Continue.
Items 5 through 7 are items for which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
All right then, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Continue.
Mr. President, there are cards on 5 through 7, so they should be held.
Okay.
And item number 8 is on the continuation agenda is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Okay, well let's, any concerns from the members? I don't see any. So why don't we vote on this item? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
That brings council back to presentations, item called special or public comment, sir. Mr. President, due to an oversight, item 1 has cards, so there should be, it needs to be reconsidered for the cards, sir.
Okay, so let's on that item, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, let's go with, we'll start off with Mr. Walsh. Items 1, 2, 5, 6 and public comment. Come forward, Mr. Walsh.
Why don't you have a long shot? You don't want to see my face. A longer shot than this. Long, long shot.
Speak to the item, Mr. Walsh.
Public comment. Item 1, you're doing a good job on building and safety. Number 2, $8 million. You're going to bonds for the Lawrence School. What the hell is the Lawrence School? $8 million? I just want people in Switzerland to realize that there's no money to run the Olympics. Number 5, number 5 is, hasn't been held. This is $20 million to reimburse the YWCA for the cost of improvements to their facilities. That's a Christian thing. Let the Christians take care of that. That's a woman's thing. Let them take care of it. We are spending and you're not talking about this. Go take a look at number 5. $20 million on the YWCA. No one gives a syphilitic rat's ass about it. You don't hear anybody up here talk about it. And number 6, repairs to the controller's office. Let me tell you what happened. This is $80,000 worth of repairs. They had a big party there. They got drunk, they were smoking dope, and the controller's office, they went wild and they created $80,000 worth of damage. Plus another $20,000 for necessary repairs in the controller's office. This is number 6. I'm not making this up. Number 6, you're just going to slide past that and hey, they can break up, they can do anything they want in the controller's office. They can get drunk, they can shoot dope, they can do anything they want, and also start a fire. As you know, a building 3 weeks ago, a couple of weeks ago was evacuated because of a huge fire. Was that in the controller's office? I can't remember whether it was in the controller's office or not. So if you look at this agenda, there's all sorts of dirt here. But I'm telling you right now that millions and millions of dollars are being spent because Switzerland is going to take care of it. Our friends in Switzerland. You can take the 16 minutes and you know what you can do with it.
Can we give him his 1 minute for general public comment?
We're talking about a water wheel that's going to be built in the Los Angeles River and a rubber dam. That's a dam that's, the Los Angeles River is always full of rubbers, used rubbers. Why are we spending huge amounts of money to build a water wheel, a recreational water wheel in the Los Angeles River? You don't give a syphilitic rat's ass one way or another. And let me tell you, a couple of weeks ago, the alarm sounded, you did nothing. You sat there with your fingers up your ass and we had to run for our lives because the... And you can just check it out on the internet. Run for your lives, the city council is a fire trap. A fire trap. That building down there, City Hall, is a fire trap.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. If we could have Ms. Donna Peerman. You have items 1 and 6 and then general public comment. So give her her 2 minutes now and then she'll get her minute. Yes, Ms. Peerman?
Okay, make a lien, make a lien, 1 lien, 10 liens, 100 liens more. Make a lien, make a lien, 1 lien, 10 liens, 100 liens more. Yes, okay to make them fix the problem, but it's not, but this is a way to hurt the middle class, poor and middle class, trying to put these things, and most of this is done with penalties. It's just turning into a revenue maker because you can't seem to have those street closures anymore. So this is a nice way to make the revenue. So I'm totally against that. I said 1 lien, 10 liens, 100 liens more. Make a lien, make a lien, 1 lien, 10 liens, 100 liens more. Yeah, get as much as you can get. That's fantastic. That's wonderful! And number 6, if they're hurting their own property, make them fix it. I think they should take it out of their own pockets and their salaries, not the taxpayers. I can't believe $80,000 because they went over there and they were wrecking their own things with parties? I mean, this should be looked into to see, you know, how proper this is, you know? So, you know, you don't seem to care, you know? You just want to, hey, let's overtax people, yay! Bring more things, bring more things on the people, yay! Let's make them all poor, yay! So, you know, you just want to, you just overtax us and let's, you know, we're going to need a Triple H to take care of all these homeless issues that create.
We've gone on topic, Mr. President.
Okay, now let's go on to public comment.
Let's give her her 1 minute.
We can't, we can't be a sanctuary city. We don't need to lose federal funding because you can't go against federal law. Look, law, look it up. Here they are on this bimonthly pretense to be tending to care for the San Fernando Valley. I guess it's good enough for the disabled to be able to speak only every other month. Well, it's not good enough. It's against the ADA, the right to be able to speak more easily being disabled. You don't care of the constituents. Streets aren't paved correctly, sidewalks unfixed, the streets cracked. They only care to taxes for HHH homeless initiative, sales tax for the Metro bullet train to leave Los Angeles, not take care of buses for people to get around here. Especially this time resolutions for Pete, our president. And you don't care for the people, city council, not just your pet projects to look good, ruining Los Angeles because sanctuary city projects taking, protects criminals and people who takes other people's identity. And you want to make more homeless people when they can't afford their rent or property tax. Care for the people. We don't need to be able to, HHH, they have, property taxes are high enough, their sales tax is high enough, you're just hurting everyone.
Thank you, Donna, thank you. If I can get Miriam Fogler. Miriam, you're on item 1 and 6 and then your general public comment. So give her 2 minutes.
I've been out of the loop for a long time and I missed the last city council meeting here. I forgot. I'm here to go at the sanctuary cities. We're public comment or is this?
No, this, you're on item 1 now, Miriam.
Item number 1.
On the liens.
On the liens, okay. Okay, listen, this is a very unfair tax because people trying to make effective repairs, you're not supposed to be making a living off of that. And what you're doing is you're looking for any way to make revenue by taxing the people. That's what you're doing. And you're fooling the public because they voted for Prop H and Triple H. And that, to me, that's just the way your taxes are working now. You just find any way to take people's property because the most valuable commodity is real estate. And you're doing this just to take people's property away so that you can use it for your own pet projects, whatever you may say. But you're going to be making a lot more people homeless this way by putting these liens on people. You should be telling them they need to fix it as an incentive and then take the liens off. Don't charge them anything. This greatly improves the city, the people will love living here. You know, I mean, you want to make the city welcome, welcome people to live here. Because otherwise you don't have anybody paying your tax revenue, okay? You're not going to have a budget left. You're going to be in the red. You're going to be bankrupt. So this is going to be a big problem if you people don't just wise up and smell the coffee. What you're doing is wrong. It's ethically, morally wrong, period, okay? That's what the lien was supposed to erect, the problem, and to make it better.
Just give her her general public comment.
Okay. I missed number 6. I talked on 6. Didn't I talk on 6?
No, you didn't, but maybe you want to talk about your sanctuary city concern.
Well, I thought, okay, I haven't, like I said, I haven't been in the loop for a long time, but sanctuary city, order number 40, I want to get rid of that. And I'm hoping that Trump will get rid of it because we don't, we don't want illegals here. No matter what race, creed, or color they are, I don't care if they have antennas coming out of their heads. And, you know, we need people who are citizens here, American citizens, Americans first, okay? And single paying, single payer, I do not want it. I don't want to get rid of our medical plans. And I disagree with the whole Tarot Tarot, the unions need to come up against that. True, Trump needs to put the US Embassy in Jerusalem for the state of Israel. And that's the way it should be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fogler, now if I could get Mr. Previn.
Can I speak on number 6?
No, you already had your time, Miriam. You had your time. Mr. Previn, Mr. Previn, you have item 1, 2, 5, 6 and public comment.
Thank you, sir. It is Eric Previn from the 2nd District here in the lovely valley. It's such a joy to be here today. Item 1, of course, the traditional lien item, I scanned briefly. And of course I concluded that about 80% of them are from downtown in either yours, Mr. Harris Dawson's district or Mr. Price's district, which is a little worrisome, I must say. Oh, CD7, of course, because the valley is so far for that group. And it seems to me like, and I'm going to reach out here in a positive way, it seemed like you continued them for that reason, and I appreciate it. But it may also have to do with the fact that the building and safety employee didn't get the memo that we're in Van Nuys. This has happened now twice. So going forward, I would just ask that we notify Charles and the building and safety folks when we are going to meet in Van Nuys with a special little tickler so that they can... folks when we are gonna meet in Van Nuys with a special little tickler, so that they can, they can be here to greet the folks who, who might show up to save themselves and not join the many ranks of homeless in Los Angeles. Obviously, we are all collectively concerned and devastated by the recent numbers, up twenty-three percent is especially painful. But the good news is, and there is no good news, that by showing high homeless number now, once H and HHH kick in...
We have veered off topic, Mr. President.
No, no, I'm just finishing my comment on the liens, sir, which are putting people out of their homes by definition, because you're taxing them a huge amount of money, and that's a problem. Now, to be fair, Rue did manage to squeeze one or two in today, I think that we are gonna settle her here, let's move forward. Item number five is the, why WCA, sir, that's the Young Women's Christian Association, a big organization, they've run into some bitter antagonism from Washington, I feel, and here it's for a project to get some affordable units into their new facility, and we have obviously providing some help with the Tefra hearing to get their, their twenty million dollars in bonds, correct me if I'm wrong, it is twenty million, thank you. And now, item number six, I wanted to say for Mr. O'Farrell, who has really done an excellent job of supporting the Controller, who is redoing his office. Now, the reason why he's redoing his office, and one of the previous speakers scanned it slightly wrong, it's not eighty thousand, eighty thousand, I believe, covers the hiring hall construction piece, it's a two-hundred-thousand-dollar upgrade. And for anybody who's ever been to the Auditor Controller's office, it looks like a little mini Lakma. This guy is doing a great job of keeping it looking nice on the outside, it's possible that the inside does not look as good. So maybe he needs to get a little work done. He might wanna rejigger, when I saw repairs to the Auditor Controller office, I thought they meant big repairs, like, what about the city surplus property problem that we've asked him to look at, that he's still getting around to, while collecting donations from those very recipients of the free city property, or the really discounted stuff, like, as my CD two representative will remember, at the Sportsman's Landing, we had a firehouse that, you know, wasn't his, it was Wendy Gruel and all those characters, they, they shushed it right out the door at a very, very low price, and now we're, we're involved in all sorts of controversy on that. I've got one more second, I'm gonna just take a deep breath and then go to my general public.
Let's go to his general public comment.
So in the general public comment, I have to simply say thank you to ITA. ITA has exceeded expectations by finally getting the cameras in Van Nuys to reduce the public to the size of a hashtag of Blooming Fields knows. Now, for those who are here to celebrate Blooming Fields Neighborhood Watch Group, I just wanna say how proud we are that they're here, that we're going to acknowledge them later, they have done a great, neighborhood is really important, and Neighborhood Watch keeps us safe, it's way better than overpaying for stuff we can't afford, so I think it's really awesome. ITA, on the other hand, has systematically followed instructions, and we now know the source, Ted Lynn has made it very, very clear, what the source is for this idea of members of the public appearing the size of hashtag Blooming Fields knows. And the, the source of that, believe it or not, sir, is a directive from you. So this caught the public by surprise. Because why in the world would our leader and cherished council president want the people who come to redress and bring comments to appear invisible? That makes absolutely no sense.
Thank you. Let's get Mr. Spindler next, with items one, two, five, six, and then the six and seven, the general public comment.
Okay, go ahead. The main gangster's back, Pepita Pig.
Hello, everybody. Now, I'm going to talk to you bitches about the items on the list. So, my colleague, Mr. Bully's done a great job, when you do a great job, I always say so, but these fucking liens are too much. And they notice CD nine as a lien, CD nine, people are raising chickens and roosters, they can't afford the fucking property taxes. In CD nine, please waive the liens, everywhere they go, uh-uh, uh-uh, because they have to raise their own chickens for meat, while Corin Price skins them alive with liens, no more liens. And then, number two is in CD two, eight million dollars for another school, so that Paul Krikorian can funnel more illegal campaign donations through nonprofits, but nobody gives a shit about it, so we support it. Now, we get to my, one of my favorite topics, which is...
Number six.
Oh, this is the thing, the boondoggle for Mr. Controller's office. Yes, hundreds of thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars to remodel somebody's office with cherry wood paneling and chiffon pillows for the gay Ron Galperin lovely rainbow office of the city controller. Yes, he's going to remodel it with Beverly Hills quality furnitures and furnishings. When the city's fucking broke, and none of you give a shit, look at Marquis Edes Dawson, they're leaning there, doesn't give a shit about this whole thing.
Get back on topic, Mr. Spindler.
The city attorney doesn't give a shit about number six. Two-hundred thousand dollars of pure fraud and fucking waste, nobody cares. And when you mention it, there's a big hurt, everybody goes, I want my money for my remodel. So number seven, we funnel campaign donations through the MAPS, the MAP Act, the biggest joke in the planet, the MAP Act. We have some people here today that are applying for a MAP Act, but they did not pay the council member off, and they did not pay building and safety enough money in bribe funds. For those of you in the law enforcement community, your pensions are being funded by money laundering, not that you give a shit. So I'll take the other remainder of my time and shove it up your fucking ass.
Just give him his minute for a general, general public.
All right, you wanted it. So, we're gonna send a letter to the State Attorney General's office, and it's gonna be about your TRO, Herb. And, you know, Hugo Rossiter defrauded the court when he filed for that TRO, because he falsely stated you work for the city attorney's office. Because of that, you got my weapons, and based upon that, you're filing the malicious gun charge. So, under ethics rules, you are not allowed to press charges in a criminal matter to gain an advantage in a civil case. And you did it to pressure me. And somebody in the city attorney's office is leaking information that says, they can prove that, you got time till June twenty-second, you better get your ass in gear and drop that fucking phony gun charge, because it's coming, baby.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gus, on item six, and general public comment.
Good morning, Councilmembers, Daniel Gus, a contributor to City Watch. I have in my iPhone an email this morning from Mr. Galperin's office regarding number six. It says a copy of how the bids for this two-hundred-thousand dollars, and how you selected the vendor, is in the council file system. Well, I would caution you to look right now in the council file system, there is no such documentation in the file system. You're proposing to spend two-hundred-thousand dollars with zero documentation that Mr. Galperin's office right here says is in the council file. I guarantee you that on Monday, I will have out an eight-hundred-word article if you approve this expenditure without the documentation that the Controller's office says is there. If you approve this now, I am going to excoriate Ms. Martinez and Mr. O'Farrell for this quarter-million-dollar boondoggle without documentation. Be careful what you approve today.
Give him his one minute.
Councilmembers, as you know, I have an article out about deadly trees in Ms. Martinez's district, and we're gonna follow up, because the city's gonna be sued big time for trees that are supposed to be trimmed, but aren't. In Mr. Rue's office, Mr. Rue is refusing to provide documentation about mail theft and fraud and break-ins in Sherman Oaks. If Mr. Rue doesn't wanna hold the LAPD accountable, I will hold Mr. Rue accountable. Regarding the sex offender that I'm about to expose, that issue, a sex offender, a registered sex offender with an aggravated conviction, is actually in Mr. Krikorian's district. So the children at an elementary school in CD two are in very close proximity to a registered sex offender, Mr. Krikorian has remained silent on it. And councilmembers, finally, very expensive litigation coming for threatening to arrest me using my LAPD.
Thank you, thank you. So now, let's go to Mr. Herman, you have items one, two, five, six, and then your general public comment. Mr. Herman?
Why so many liens? Why do we take advantage of those who are now bound to be homeless because of your miserably blablabli liens? Is it, is it unconstitutional to waive a lien? You have the power and the authority. People here, like on item four, are here to complain about why Plum has used the enforcement of Department of Building and Safety to remove you from your home because of all the chinchero. You know what that is, rookie? It's called trash. And people's trash is someone's belongings in their property. So stop putting fucking liens on their property. That's item one for the record. On behalf of all those who have a lien, I say to you, fuck you. Now I'm going to item number, uh, 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 oh, yeah, yeah, there we go. For the record, again, motion by Weezer, he's not even here in Van Nuys, where's the fat, bald fuck schmuck who's supposed to be issuing more series of revenue bonds? For what? To build a fucking wheel in the Alley River? Doesn't make sense. Now, let's go to item six, bitches. Because let's be careful about exactly what City Watch is saying about Krikorian. Sex offenders, how to transfer inappropriate fundings to traffic children in our communities needs to stop. We have to have an administrative expense...
This is not on item six, Mr. President.
Hold on, rookie, I'm on topic. How do we transfer appropriate two-hundred thousand to the Controller if he's priming up his facilities? The only rainbow I want is a rainbow of truth. The rainbow of truth that takes me from being in poverty to the pot of gold to rebuild L.A. Not this fucking salaries and construction projects, not this fucking bullshit on material supplies, because you don't keep tracking records on the issue. Goddamn stupid, aren't you? And then let's go to item eight.
Was he on item?
I can't even speak anymore, because it's so goddamn disgusting, energy, energy in the commentary board, bro.
Mr. President, item eight has already been voted on.
Are you the chair, let the chair control the floor.
The speaker's on topic, off topic, Mr. President.
Mr. Herman, get back on topic. No, what you, you identified the items that you wanted to speak, I told you what they were, and those are the items that you speak to.
I'm on the final maps of maps, rookie. It's so fucked up that you had to change all the rezonations...
The speaker didn't sign up for item seven, which is final maps, Mr. President.
Mr., let's give him his one minute for general public comment.
Pure evil. No place like home is pure evil. You've heard it in the Alley Times, you've seen it on the news, more homeless people in the goddamn street because we got a rookie attorney who sits there and interrupts public comment. Butt out of the Brownac, you fucking schmuck, and let people speak about the pure evil of sanctuary cities, because I'm a white nigger according to my paperwork, and I can't afford a goddamn home, I can't even fucking rent near the Staples Center to enjoy the amenities. So before you get up there and lull a gag about how sweet it is in L.A., and we don't have the Olympics in 2024, ha, ha, ha. And then on top of that, Mr. Scott Wiener in San Francisco, and my message to you on the phone the other day, stop these white nigger politicians from stealing from no place like home, because it's pure evil, and I'm going to Bob Hertzberg and complain.
Thank you, thank you, okay. Now, let's vote on items one, members. So, madam, I mean, Mr. Clerk, on item one, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Let's move on to item four. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Now, let's vote on items two. Miriam, please don't disrupt now. Let's vote on items two, five, six, and seven. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Okay. I'd like to get rid of a few people who patiently waited, so Candido, Robert M. and Albert, please come forward.
Who's first, Mr. President?
One minute, whoever gets there first.
Is it okay if he goes first?
It's fine. Go ahead, sir.
Hi there, my name is Robert Mahanian. I'm, my father and I own the property that you guys are voting on, number four. We started this project back in 2013 to create a six-unit building, but because of community pressures, and because the Westwood Design Review Board, after three years that we got there okay, and the Area Planning Commission, which also approved our project after going through it, we met with community members, and we reduced this project from six units to five units. And eventually, we even reduced it down to one unit. Right now, what is before you is to build one unit on top of an existing garage in an alleyway in Westwood. And it's before city council, why? Because we're here because the tenant who lives in the building filed an appeal, and appealed this, and appealed it, and appealed it, to the point where we're before city council now for one unit.
Thank you.
I have my public comment as well.
Thank you, no, 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 you don't. Sir, sir, you, you have one minute. And now I'm looking for Albert. Albert, you can speak.
Yes, the city is going overboard with all these hearings to just allow us, which we have the right, by right, we're trying to build one unit in our property, and the city is holding us back for four years, and they are not letting us do that. This is not right, and it needs to get some action to, to correct this problem. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I have public comment for one minute.
Now, note, Robert, you have one minute, the item that you signed up to speak on, public comment, has already been satisfied. No, Robert, we're not gonna go back and forth, you were given your minute. So now, I'm looking for Candido, are you ready? And I have Jeff Yowell and Andy Steinhauser, yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Candido Maris, proud resident of the Twelfth District. I'm, I'm here today to thank Ms. Sammy Park from Dunn, she's trying to do a good job with some of the issues that we're having with neighborhood councils. Never, ever should there, violence be allowed at a city council or at a neighborhood council. And you should never have to fear stakeholders coming and threatening, threatening you. As a stakeholder, you should never have to worry about board members who leave their seats and rush you, and nearly can cause harm to you, or when you have board members who hit another board member in the back of head with a water bottle, or who takes a flag, the American flags, and then angles it so then when he passes by, it falls down and hits another board member in the head. These things cannot be allowed. And so Ms. Parks has been trying to do a great job on this, and unfortunately, she's been criticized by certain individuals, and we just hope that she continues to do her job. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could get my last two speakers, please come forward. Please come forward. Just identify yourself.
My name is Jeff Yowell. I, I'm a proud resident of District Thirteen. I'm here to make a public comment on the proposal to limit Airbnb hosting. My husband and I host Airbnb, are Airbnb hosts, because it's the only way to reasonably pay the mortgage. We have a duplex in Los Angeles, because of the driveway, it's not really realistic or practical for us to renovate and run it as a traditional apartment. However, as Airbnb, we, we host for people who are willing to take car sharing everywhere, and we refer a lot of visitors to our neighborhood, which is not somewhere where most visitors would normally go, and we bring them to lots of local businesses.
How many days out of a year do you, would you say you host?
We, 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 we host quite a bit, over, probably over two-hundred-and-fifty days.
Okay, next.
Hello, hi, my name is Andy Steinhauser, member of District Four. I'm here to argue again on behalf of home sharing and against the proposed ordinance that's upcoming. that's upcoming. I live in the Hollywood Hills Universal City area. We must remove the 180-day cap on the housing. It doesn't make any sense. Imagine if you have a casita in the back. It limits a lot of potential upward mobility, and that's really what I want to talk about. Airbnb hosting home sharing services like this allow upward mobility in the gig economy. I'm an entrepreneur. We can easily coexist with these hotels, hotels and all these rental properties. Everybody is making money, everybody is winning, there's no need to, to limit this in any way. My guests are very respectful visitors that come and spend money at local businesses and at big corporate businesses like Universal Studios. They drop money all over town, very respectful guests. Home sharing allows people like me to not just live in Los Angeles, but to thrive in Los Angeles. This is a new world order and we have to be able to work with entrepreneurs as well as big corporate businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes general public comment. Mr. Blumenfield for, uh, a presentation. Mr. Spindler, don't disrupt the, uh, presentation. No, just, he's getting ready, setting it up. Don't, nobody disrupted you when you spoke, don't, uh, show the same respect. Okay, Mr. Blumenfield, floor is yours.
All right. Thank you, uh, Mr. President, colleagues. This morning, we're here to honor a successful partnership among the LAPD West Valley Division, the Tarzana South Neighborhood Watch, and the West Valley Community Police Advisory Board. Now although this amazing partnership, which I want to share with you so that in your communities you can try to have it duplicated as well, it grew out of some unfortunate circumstances, which is that in our neighborhood, in the West Valley, particularly in Tarzana, we saw a real uptick in crime and we started seeing the, the knock-knock burglaries happen quite a bit. And the community wanted to see, wanted to be part of the solution. Yeah, they were, they want to see more police as, as you guys are tired of hearing me talk about all the time and we all want to see, see that and we're proud to do that in this year's budget, but they wanted to be part of the solution. And what, what came out of that was the Tarzana South Neighborhood Watch, uh, it grew as an organization connected with Facebook. And they now have over 2,000 verified residents and stakeholders as members who act as the eyes and ears of the LAPD. So when there's a suspicious vehicle, when there's something going on and you, you know, they report it on the website, they're able to communicate with each other, all verified individuals, and we're able to make an impact. But it's, it's an impact not just because we're talking among ourselves in the community, but because we're partnering with LAPD and LAPD has seen the value of this, um, and it's been amazing. I had the opportunity to walk our streets with the, um, with the Neighborhood Watch on patrol, see firsthand the differences being made. And there are a lot of people I want to acknowledge as part of this, this partnership. First, I want to recognize the West Valley Community Police Advisory Board. They have, their efforts, they educate the community about how and what to report to police. They build on the partnership. Uh, and we, we have Susan Rickman, who's been a volunteer with, with the CPAB. We have Captain Lewis is here as well, um, and she's going to have, say a few words in a little bit. Sergeant Avila, Officer Rios. These guys are making it happen with the CPAB. Next, I want to salute Lieutenant Lou Vince. Thanks to information provided by the Neighborhood Watch Group, he was able to find and arrest a major car burglar. Thank you, uh, Lieutenant Vince, for all the work you're doing keeping our community safe and making it a better place. There you are. Exactly in my, my, my spot, I can't see behind my back. I also want to honor, uh, Senior Lead Officer Daryl Scoggins for his outstanding community policing work. Tarzana really is a safer place thanks to his efforts, his ubiquitous presence. And I also, last but not least, I want to recognize the Tarzana South Neighborhood Watch, this, this very unique new group that is connecting with the existing CPABs and neighborhood watches, uh, that is making a big difference with that partnership. Uh, and we have Gail Webster and Jeff Gross, who are both founding members, we're on this side of me here, I keep turning the wrong direction, uh, in creating this effort to, to link up the community. Because what, what the police always tell us is the best way to prevent crime is for neighbors to know each other. Uh, and that's a big part of what this is about, is getting the neighbors to know each other, to work with each other, and to make a difference in our community. Uh, so I've got some certificates for all the folks I mentioned, uh, but I also want to give Captain Lewis a chance to speak and then, uh, Cap, uh, Lead Officer Scoggins. So Captain Lewis.
Give him a round of applause. Welcome, Captain.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, Council. I stand before you as a very proud captain. You know, when you, when you take over command, one of the challenges is how are you going to get everything done that you want to get done? And as a captain, you have very lofty goals. And I was very fortunate when I took over this command, I had communities that were very, very engaged. And before I could start doing anything, they met with me to let me know how engaged they were and they were testing my commitment to them. They wanted to be sure and they wanted me to assure them that I was going to continue the work and take it to the next level, the work that my predecessor had started with them. And I assured them that I would take that baton and continue to move forward. And, and they weren't shy about their expectations of me. And, uh, they showed me their level of commitment to make their community safe and in their partnership with, with us and the council office, we've done wonderful things. They are actively engaged. You know, I've told them, we can't do it alone. There are more of them than us and they showed us the will, when the community has the willpower to make things happen, you can do great things. They have surpassed my expectations. The council member referenced a, um, a significant arrest we just made. It was by them taking video and posting it on Facebook and the lieutenant seeing that video and working it up and we were able to take a prolific burglary theft from motor vehicle suspect into custody. We're using that, that community as a force multiplier, multiplier, and I'm attempting to replicate what they're doing in Tarzana South and other areas of West Valor, West Valley. Tremendous amount of work, tremendous partnerships. And, you know, this is the kind of thing that should go on throughout the city and my, my hats off to them, my staff, my senior lead officer, Lieutenant Vince. You know, there's such synergy going on between the community and the police department as well as our council office. And like, again, like I said, very, very proud captain that stands before you and my kudos to them.
Officer Scott Scoggins, would you like to say a few words?
Hello, everybody. I'm Daryl Scoggins. Uh, Mr. President and, uh, council members, one, thank you. This is an honor to us. So thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't touch nothing.
That happens every time I shake someone's hand, it's just a thank.
For us, for the, for West Valley, we're very, a small piece in this, uh, big, um, thing that's going on. To me, it's the community. And I thank them for what, uh, what they have done with the community and, um, they took the Neighborhood Watch program and stepped it up beyond, um, what, what we were doing. And not only did it make, uh, other senior leads within West Valley a little nervous, but the whole city, and it should go into your districts as well on what they are doing. At, at just a, you know, just a quick type, I can reach over 2,000 people and give them a message of what's, uh, what's going on. We're, we're so transparent to them that, um, it's, it's unbelievable. And the communication between each of the neighbors is awesome. We sit there and watch it. Um, and I believe that the Tarzana South has bonded in ways that no community has, um, just by the communication that they do between each other and then with Blumenfield's office and the police department. So again, uh, I thank the community. So if you would please, uh, uh, give them another round because it's all the community's effort.
And Jeff Gross is one of the, one of the founders of this, of this amazing Neighborhood Watch that's taken it to the next level. Tell us a little bit about it. Jeff.
Thank you so much for, for this, really, this is pretty amazing. It was started out of fear and frustration on the community's side and it's turned into a really beautiful thing, working with the police department. And the bonds that I think that have been made have been really amazing. The footprint of this has been incredible and using that as a blueprint would be amazing to take it. That was one of the original concepts, was to take this and just drop this, this blueprint in every little community in the city so that we can all bridge the gap between, uh, law enforcement and the community so that a lot of walls are broken across the board, anything that you can think of, especially communication. So I think that that's really an amazing, um, outcome that's happened here and plus a lot of really good relationships. So, I mean, I just wanted to say on behalf of Gail and the rest of us, thank you so much for, for this. This is pretty amazing and to see how it's grown and how it continues to grow is just a beautiful thing.
Thank you, Jeff. And, uh, to mark this partnership, we've got a certificate for, uh, for everyone I mentioned, the Tarzana South Neighborhood Watch, please accept this small token. Uh, the West Valley CPAB. All right. Slow Scoggins. Thank you. And Lieutenant Vince. Let's give them all a big round of applause.
Yes.
All right. We'll go to the photo wall. Thanks.
Again, congratulations. Thank you for your service. Mr. Corretts.
Well, thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. Today we're celebrating the United Chamber of Commerce's third annual selection of inspirational women of the San Fernando Valley. This is, event is to honor, uh, women who are dedicated, inspiring, and role models for others. These women come from an array of backgrounds in the film industry, business, nonprofits, government, medicine, and community advocacy. Out of 65 women nominated, there were five selected and we're fortunate to have three of those women here with us today. It's my honor to recognize these women whose creativity, entrepreneurial innovation, advocacy, and community service benefit the San Fernando Valley, but of course their gifts pay dividends to the rest of the community in Los Angeles as well. This award is more than about accomplishments. It's an opportunity to pay tribute to the ways these women are truly role models for all of us. They inspire those around them as their dedication, innovation, and vision empower the communities they serve. They were nominated by their admirers and those who have reaped the rewards of their passion and their dedication, and I'm sure when you hear their stories, they'll inspire you too. And I would have to ask Mr. Herman to stop disrupting the meeting if he can be instructed
Last warning, Mr. Herman. Okay, go on, Mr. Corretts.
Our first honoree is Marlene Harrison.
I think that was Mr. Spindler.
Oh, well, it was actually both of them, so. So once again, um, I'd like to, uh, we now have another one.
Okay, wait a minute. Hold his time. You get your minute, your time is up, so now I'm telling you to be quiet. If you continue, I will ask you to leave. That's very fair, everybody. You got your time, you spoke. Now be quiet, the last warning. And I apologize to you, Mr. Corretts, and to the individuals that have done so much for our community. So, Mr. Corretts, back to you.
Thank you. Once again, first, I'd like to introduce Marlene Harrison, um, who's, whom my staff in Council District Five has had the pleasure of working with for the better part of a decade. I first met Marlene at the Encino Chamber of Commerce office where we discussed how we could help our senior citizens. Marlene is Vice President at Concepts for Living, a free residential placement service for seniors, and she's a veritable icon in the field of geriatrics. With more than 24 years of experience in this field, she spent 10 years as the Director of the Center for Aging Research and Evaluation at Granada Hills Community Hospital. Over the years, she's helped my office on a number of senior care items, including her current organization that she founded, MAPS Charities Incorporated, a group that provides economically challenged seniors living on fixed incomes the funds to solve short-term financial issues. Something as simple as providing a couple hundred dollars so that a person living on social security can pay their higher tax bill during the cold winter months. In 2016, MAPS charities helped 20 individuals, mostly San Fernando Valley residents and mostly seniors. Marlene is an inspirational woman because of the unending compassion, patience, grace, innovation, and leadership she shows on a daily basis, ensuring a higher quality of life for our senior population in the, in the San Fernando Valley. So I'd like to present this certificate from the city to Marlene.
Marlene.
I do want to say thank you to the Encino Chamber, the United Chambers, and the City Council for this wonderful award. Uh, I would like to give a special thank you to Councilman Corretts and Councilman Blumenfield. Both have been so supportive of MAPS charities as we endeavor to help the so many seniors in need. Thank you.
Now we want to thank you. Let's give her another round of applause. Thank you, Marlene.
I'd also like to recognize Rebecca Leanhart, the CEO of Tierra del Sol Foundation, an organization that supports individuals with developmental disabilities to lead productive and meaningful lives. Rebecca has been with Tierra del Sol for 26 years, where she started as a job trainer and worked her way up to CEO. The many individual accomplishments that Rebecca has achieved over 26 years on behalf of Tierra and at the helm of Tierra are too many to list here, but you should note that she did all this as a single mother of three. In 2000, she returned to school at night and earned her master's in special education from CSUN. Just a few highlights of her accomplishments along the way. She has created and sustained more than 155 partnerships with businesses, nonprofits, and schools throughout the San Fernando Valley who have benefited and contributed to improving the lives of more than 675 people with disabilities each day. These partnerships have not only helped the people that Tierra directly serves, but has created awareness within these organizations and businesses as well as other public contacts that regardless of a disability, each person has the potential and the right to lead a full and productive and personally meaningful life. Rebecca has shown thousands of community members that people with disabilities have a voice and a role within society, and not just a role, but a chance to shine. So I'd like to recognize Rebecca Leanhart.
Rebecca, congratulations. And the council would like to thank you as well.
First of all, thank you very much for this honor. Um, thank you to the United Chamber of Commerce for the honor, but I think I would be, uh, I don't know, missing, well, there you are.
No, just go ahead.
Not for you.
Go ahead.
If I don't, uh, speak for the people that I represent, uh, on a daily basis, Tierra represents about 700 individuals, but across your city, um, you represent about 85,000 individuals who are born with very significant disabilities, who simply want to find a voice and a way to achieve, uh, contributions through their skills and abilities in the, in the larger world. And so I just want to say that we can't lose focus. You clearly have many issues and many, many challenges in running this city, but we must continue to find a way of helping those who have the least voice among us, uh, to help create a lifestyle for themselves through meaningful work, through college experience, and through careers in the arts. And so if anything, I hope that you hear that you continue, uh, to find ways to contribute to their lives and find meaningful ways to help them achieve their success in this world. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now I'd like to ask my colleague, Bob Blumenfield, to come up to honor Georgia Van Kylenberg.
Thank you, Councilmember Corretts. Thank you for bringing this, uh, amazing presentation forward. Uh, and it really is, it's an amazing group that's standing behind me. Folks, I've gotten, you know, blessed to have worked with all of you on, on, on lots of things. Marlene, the, the help with the senior fraud, uh, prevention program we did back in my assembly days and, uh, Vahid and Mark, you guys are on, helping push this forward and, and there's not a chamber event that you guys don't have your fingers on and making things happen in the valley. Rebecca, we've worked together on so many things. I've got the Tierra Art in my office. I mean, these, everybody behind me is, the, these are forces of the valley and, and I'm just thrilled to be here and now I get to say something about Georgia and, and tell you a little bit about her and in. introduce her. So Georgia Van, I always pronounce her name, Kylenberg, is the founder and executive director of Arts Bridging the Gap. This organization empowers underprivileged youth by offering them an artistic outlet that builds community self-esteem and helps improve their academics. Four of their current projects. One, the Hollywood Street Art Initiative, it brings, bringing kids enrolled in the Police Activity League and the LAPD together to create street art. Another one, a project where children from lower-income schools and more affluent schools join together to create environmentally sustainable pieces of art. Number three, they have a professional development program with Harvard University that teaches students at youth build charter schools how to use arts better in their academics. And the Girls Make VR, a hands-on workshop enabling diversity and inclusion in the immersive tech industry by putting continual education events for young girls from underserved areas. But Georgia's nonprofit work doesn't stop there. She works with numerous organizations, such as the LA Mission, Hope Mill in Tarzana, Children's Hospital LA, Children's Life Saving Foundation, Gabriella Foundation, Parlos Ninos, and the Children's Alopecia Project. Now, alopecia is one of those issues that's close to her heart. For years, she's been a leader and volunteered for groups such as Children's Alopecia Project because she knows how this disease hurts young children. It can be demoralizing to have, to one's self-esteem, and she makes sure that each and every child she spends time with leaves with a smile on their face. She's also an executive board member of C5 LA, supporting high-potential teens from under-resourced communities by inspiring them to be leaders and giving them tools for success. She's also been a leader in greening struggling areas, such as the New Skid Row Rooftop Garden at the Los Angeles Mission. This is, they grow 150 vertical gardens that they are harvested by the residents of the mission, and they use those gardens to help feed the community. These are just a few of her many accomplishments. And I haven't even mentioned that on top of all this, she has a very active day job as a successful comedian, TV host, actor, and writer. I don't know, I mean, she's figured out how to change the time dimensions and do all these things. I have no idea, but we all can take a page out of her book and figure out how to do 1,000 things at once. She is a treasure for the San Fernando Valley and every day is making Los Angeles a better place to live, work, and play. Congratulations, Georgia, on being named one of this year's United Chambers of the San Fernando Valley's Inspirational Women of the Year. You and all of the other women are inspiring, and I get to give you this wonderful certificate from the City of Los Angeles. Please accept this small token of appreciation.
Congratulations, Georgia.
My gosh, thank you so very much. That was lovely of you. Thank you all for being here, to hear what we're doing. Thank you so much for the other women for inspiring me. I think it's so important to acknowledge what today is about, that you're all here sitting where you sit every day because you think things are possible. And you know that anything is possible when we come together to create change. And I think what is so important is for us to remember, like Rebecca said, the people that don't believe things are possible, that have grown up believing they can't ask questions or that things don't work for them. And those are the people that make us inspired on a daily basis, that we don't necessarily get to talk about every day. So I'm so grateful that we get to come in front of you today to share what we do and the chance that one of you resonate with something that we do, or can make something possible for one of the people in our lives that believes things, believe things aren't possible. So I look forward, as I go in my time in LA and work more with all of you, to find ways to make things possible for them, to find ways to give them a yes to their answers, and to find ways to change our city with the incredible children that I get to work with every day, because I've got to tell you, they're amazing. They're so incredible. And there's a reason why I spend every day with them, because they are going to change our city in the way that we know is possible. So thank you very much for every part that you contribute to that, and I'm very honored and grateful.
Now, thank you. Thank you.
So thank you for joining us for this honor. It's amazing that we have so many amazing women in the San Fernando Valley. Thank you again to the United Chambers.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, what is before this body?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
They are posted, they are referred. Announcements, members? Any announcements? Mr. Bonin?
Yes, Mr. President. I have a couple of announcements. It's a very busy weekend. In Venice, we are celebrating our second Venice Pride celebration with a number of events. Tonight, from 5:00 to 11:00 p.m., there will be a block party and a lighting in rainbow colors of the iconic Venice sign. That's at the corner of Windward and Pacific. At 9:30, there's going to be a Queer as Funk after-party at the Townhouse. At 11:30, an after-after-party at the Birdcage. Tomorrow morning at 8:30, there will be an LGBTQ and Allies Beach Cleanup in Venice at Brooks Avenue, the site of the new Bill Rosendahl Lifeguard Tower, which is beautifully artistic. Sheila Kuhl and I finished painting it yesterday. The finishing touches that the community put on a rainbow-colored lifeguard tower at the new Bill Rosendahl Memorial Beach at Venice. And then there's a Status is Sexy Extravaganza at Muscle Beach tomorrow afternoon from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m., open to everybody. It's art, music, and spoken word. This Pride Festival in Venice, the second year, is unique in that two of the big cosponsors are the Rams and the Chargers. And it is the first time a professional football team has sponsored an LGBT Pride event. More information at venispride.org if folks want to know. Everybody is invited. And I also want to note, this, this is going to sound like sort of the comic book geek in me, but this is the opening weekend of the movie Wonder Woman. It started last night. And I bring it up not just because I'm a comic book fan, because this is actually a pretty important and significant moment in our society. Because this movie is already poised to be a blockbuster. It's 93% favorable rating on Rotten Tomatoes. It's already selling out. And Gal Gadot, the star, is going to be an icon. And this movie is directed as a female director, Patty Jenkins. And only 4% of the blockbuster movies in this country have had a female director. So it's going to be important because of that. And because of that, next September, when kids go back to school, or August, when they go back to school, the hot new t-shirt, the hot new lunchbox is going to be of a female action star that young boys and young girls are going to be wearing. So I was disappointed we weren't at City Hall today because I had my 18-inch Wonder Woman statue I was going to have here for that. But it's, it's a really important moment that the, that the big action movie of the summer has a female star with a female director, and that's a damn good thing.
And I agree. You can bring the statue on Tuesday. All right? So are any other announcements? Then if I can ask all to please rise for adjourning motions? If all of the members would rise for adjourning motions? I'm going to look to my left side. I see none to my left. Now I'm looking to my right. I see none. Members, have a good weekend. This meeting's adjourned.